I'm aware that I was pretty poor. I grew up probably at the, maybe the bottom 5% of the students in school. And as I got to about the 5th grade, I noticed something change. All of a sudden, my father drove a little bit better of a car. All of a sudden, I could go to the dentist. I had my eyes examined. My brothers and sisters as well. And as I got a little older, I realized why. My father joined local 547 laborers' union in New London. And my quality of life, as well as my brothers' and sisters' quality of life, went up. Was it because my father was the greatest man in the world? Of course not. But he was a hard-working person, and he was given the opportunity to raise the quality of life for himself and his family. As I get older, I chose to go to trade school, state trade school, Ellis Tech. Went to masonry. And I get out and I got a job in the residential arena. At the time, there wasn't a lot of large jobs, and I really didn't know anyone. And I struggled. I had no health insurance. Many times, I was paid cash. As a matter of fact, I was underpaid on state job, prevailing wage jobs. But at the time, I didn't even know what that meant. I was quite ignorant. But when I joined local 12 Bricklayers Union in Norwich, I had health insurance. I was contributing to a pension. I bought a newer vehicle. And then I bought a home and got married. My kid, I've put one child through college. I have one more on the way. These people in this room don't want welfare like Lowe's or Walmart asks for when they come to the state. They don't want it. These are the best people in the world. This is what makes America great. These people do not want to hand out. They don't want your help. They want to work, and they want to work hard. But they need help. They need the government to realize that you cannot help companies contribute to a race to the bottom. We have to reward the companies that help, give opportunity to these people here. One of the developers that proposed for this site, one of the developments, understands that. And I think we all understand that. We need you to understand that. The quality of life for a tremendous amount of people and families and children can be helped if you make the right decision. Please make the right decision. Thank you.
Jackie Karen, followed by, looks like Roger Dayen.
Good evening, Secretary Ryan and members of the panel. My name is Jacqueline Karen. I'm a member of the Norwich Town Council, and I've been a resident of southeastern Connecticut 40-plus years. Tonight, I am here representing Senator Edith Prege of the 19th Superior District and co-chair of the Labor Committee. She regrettably could not be here this evening because of Family Matters, but she did want me to make a statement on her behalf. She strongly feels that in any decision being made on this panel, that at least two legislators who represent southeastern Connecticut should be on the panel. And hope that there's a possibility of you changing your mind on that issue, Secretary Ryan.
Roger Dayen, followed by Sandy Ewing. Roger Dayen. Sandy Ewing. Followed by Merrill Gerber.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Ewing, and I am chairperson of the Preston Citizens Advisory Committee. Property owners in close proximity to the former Norwich hospital, state property, formed this committee for three reasons. One, to gather and distribute information directly affecting our community. Two, to be able to voice our concerns and our issues. And three, to lobby for a development that best meets the needs of our community. The committee has developed a list of issues and concerns. This document has already been submitted to Mark Ryan on OPM, and it's also available to anybody else who'd like to take a look at it. It speaks to four major areas of concerns: community impact, traffic management, financial concerns, and environmental concerns. In March, this committee distributed surveys to our neighbors in close proximity to the property, and we also left additional copies at the Preston Public Library. Our committee conducted the survey to better understand the opinions of local residents. Thirty-six surveys were returned from our neighbors, three from outside of Preston, and six from outside of the area, and six from outside of town. The survey totals showed the top five concerns are, in order: traffic, noise pollution, environmental pollution, tax and financial issues, and five, property value. The results of the survey also show that the following developmental preferences in order: number one, a research-light industrial park; number two, a golf course with age-restricted housing; three, a hotel marina; and fourth, a theme park performing arts movie studio. The committee recognizes, we really do, that development will occur at this property. We want to let all know that we are committed to achieving the best possible outcome for our community. The Preston Citizens Advisory Committee looks forward to working with all developers to bring to the table the concerns of their new neighbors and community. Hopefully, through continuing dialogue, we can develop a mutual respectful relationship. I thank the committee and Mr. Ryan for your time.
Thank you. Merrill Gerber, followed by Greg Martin.
Good evening. Can you...
Sir, sir, put your hand over the left microphone.
I don't think that's it. We need an audio engineer. Good evening. Good evening, Secretary Ryan, committee members, and guests of Preston. I'm Merrill Gerber from 53 Mattern Road here in town. And back in 1998, I was one of the alternate members of the original hospital advisory group. Secretary Ryan, we thank you very much for taking your time this evening to be with us as we start, or I should say restart, the whole process of finding a new use for the Norwich Hospital property. I use the words restart because the 1999 efforts were never completed. The state initiated a two-step process, starting with a request for qualifications. We received several submissions. We evaluated those submissions in accordance with a set of weighted criteria. We identified one candidate as our preferred choice for developing a proposal, which would have been the last step. And then the state terminated the project. I should say the state terminated the process. I think I represent a large number of people in this room, both our residents and our guests this evening, when I say that we'd like to see closure to this process. We'd like to see a process that's open to public scrutiny, not conducted behind locked doors like the previous one. We'd like to see a process that selects a developer with a quality project that increases our tax base, is an economic benefit to the region, and my concern is that the state doesn't stop the process again. And I bring that up only because if you read the RFP, there are a large number of caveats and open-ended termination options for terminating the process. I hope that doesn't happen. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, everyone, for being here.
Thank you. Greg Martin, followed by Robert Stonic.
Good evening. Well, I'm a true outsider to this situation, as you can probably see by the way I'm dressed. I've come up here from New York. My name is Greg Martin. I'm the executive vice president of a film and television production company called EMPI. The president and partner of my company, Mark Lipsky, managed Eddie Murphy for over a decade and produced over a dozen of Eddie's movies, which have grossed more than $1 billion worldwide. Like a lot of people in Hollywood, I've watched the story of what's going on here for quite a while with a lot of close interest, and I've been trying to figure out what's taken it so long to get off the ground. And I'd like you to answer that question for me tonight. The American film industry, I forgot to mention one thing, I'm lucky enough to come from a very prestigious family background, just good fortune. My father's Sir George Martin, who produced The Beatles. So I've been around the entertainment industry my whole life. Like any other industry, the entertainment industry is fundamentally about jobs for the people. What this project is about, as I understand it, is the opportunity to create thousands of jobs in this area, to remove a lot of the emphasis on Canada as a production area, to bring in billions of dollars of revenue. And I'm primarily here because my company would like to use that facility once it is developed. And believe me, we are not alone. We have a pipe on a product ready: film, television, music, every single area. And for decades, people have wanted a huge studio complex on the East Coast of America so that people who live in Hollywood can come back. People from the East Coast, they want to work here. They don't want to work out there. Silver Cup in New York doesn't work. This is the place to do it. Create the jobs, bring the industry here, and I guarantee you Hollywood will flock here. And I just don't understand why it's not happening. It's just quite as simple as that. By the way, I'm also a member of a union, because I was an actor before, Screen Actors Guild.
Robert Stonic, followed by Susan Babbitt. Robert Stonic.
Good evening. Thank you for giving the town of Preston and citizens of New London County an opportunity to speak. The Norwich Hospital property, which comprises about 2% of the total land mass in the town of Preston, is our most marketable piece of real estate. Its beauty, waterfront location, zoning, and access to water, rail, and highway make it a rare and valuable asset. In the past, it was a thriving community within a community, providing both revenue and jobs to our citizens. Alas, over the last nine years, it has remained vacant and neglected, falling into an unnecessary state of disrepair. As a further insult to our tax base, the revenue our town receives from the state on this property, known as pilot funds, was dropped significantly to reflect its crumbling condition. After lying dormant for a number of years, it was finally decided that the state would market the property. A developer is called in, a half-hearted attempt is made, no takers, and suddenly the developer puts a proposal on the table, just the kind of proposal that we are trying to avoid. Any proposal that would significantly add to our tax base, provide solid employment opportunities, and enhance the community would most likely have been acceptable to our largely bedroom community. But most of the proposals that we have received have been quite to the contrary. We, as a town, cannot afford more golf courses, housing units, and the like. We desperately need to put this piece of property to work for us if we are to weather the financial storms that our town is experiencing. Wonder of wonders, we have received a fantastic proposal that not only would bolster our tax base, create jobs, bring educational opportunities and entertainment to our area, but clean up the 40 million-plus toxic material problem on site. And what does the state do? Nothing. Worse than nothing, they make more rules, restart the proposal process, and risk driving off the most viable proposal that we could ever hope for. I say, let's get on with it. Nine years is long enough! The townspeople of the town of Preston have spoken, and spoken, and spoken. When is the state going to listen?
I don't know about anybody else, but this thing's been driving everybody crazy. And you have a whole bunch of electricians out here, I gather, and maybe somebody can fix this at some point in time. Secretary Ryan, esteemed panel, appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. I think I understand the ground rules here, which are a little prescriptive, in my opinion. But let me introduce myself. My name is Tim Bowles. That's B-O-W-L-E-S. I live about a few miles down the road from here, on River Road in Preston. Have lived there for about 30 years. I'm actually a state employee, started my state service almost 25 years ago, and happened to work at Norwich State Hospital. Would echo some of the comments that Senator Cook made in regards to the whole closure of that facility and the lack of adequate planning in regards to human services for that particular population. Nonetheless, 25 years ago, the state entered into a process of deinstitutionalizing that facility. And I just want to say, we're still left with remnants of that particular policy decision. Again, not this particular administration, obviously. I also happen to be on the state executive committee for the Sierra Club, so have some environmental interests here. Also want to say that I was an alternate also on the Norwich Hospital Advisory Group many years ago, at which time we went ahead and spent a lot of time with Andrew Norton, who was chairing that. And I just want to quote Andrew. I think this is very relevant in terms of this whole process. Back in February of 1998, Andrew Norton is quoted as saying, "The gears of government turn slowly." I would say that this whole process certainly emphasizes that whole issue and that point. I have also was on the Planning and Zoning Board, elected official. At the time, that we went ahead and spent months and months and months taking a look at the Norwich State Hospital and carefully, in my opinion, crafting a zoning overlay regulations for that particular site. We took into consideration the best use of that facility. We took into consideration the need for this town to have an economic base. And it was decided at that point in time by the elected officials and through a lot of public input that that was the best site in the town of Norwich to go ahead and create a district in which we could do some high-intensity development down there in conjunction with things that are already happening associated with the casino. I also want to say I used to be vice president with AFL-CIO. I'm a union steward with ANR Local 4200, American Federation of Teachers. And I just think this is fantastic, that I have all these brothers and sisters coming into this community to go ahead and speak about what's important to the citizens of this community. I want to draw your attention to some of the things that have occurred, that I have some concerns about as a taxpayer, a state taxpayer, in this community. Back in 1990, let's see, let me turn to my handout here. September of 1998, I was given a handout. We all were, when we were on the Norwich, the predecessor to this particular group. And that handout indicates in September of 1998, CB Richard Ellis completed a marketing study recommending that the state focus on, one, their priority recommendation to the state of Connecticut. And this was a $220,000 study that produced, this is very glossy, you like this, folks? Okay? $220,000, we went ahead as taxpayers of this state to go ahead and get a consultant in, to go ahead, and their recommendation is, was, back in September of 1998, to focus on entertainment, hospitality, and retail uses, okay? I would suggest that that may have been money well-spent, and I would ask you to go back and revisit that whole study. The other issue that's serviced here tonight, I think, and unfortunately, and I'll talk a little bit about the negative before I talk about, seriously, positive, is the whole issue of trust here right now. And I also go back to a February 2000 article where it talks about "State's Contempt for Preston All Too Clear in Hospital Assessment." We're dealing with a situation right now, unfortunately, Secretary Ryan, and certainly I'm not addressing this at you, but we're dealing with overall an administration that's been called into question regarding backroom deals, and I think somebody talked about money in people's pockets. The trust level of the citizens of this state in terms of the state government is relatively undermined and to a large degree nonexistent. On a final note, and I'll buy in a cup of coffee on this one, just to give me an extra 20 seconds, I think other people have spilled over. There are opportunities here to go ahead and create a synergy, to go ahead and deal with transportation, energy issues, and I'm talking about the utilization of renewable energies. Under Secretary McGaughy and I sit on the Clean Energy Fund, I think we have some tremendous opportunities here to go ahead and deal in a very progressive way in utilizing and creating an infrastructure here, utilizing renewable energies and alternative energy, alternative transportation modes, to go ahead and really create a state-of-the-art situation down at that particular site. And I would like to request the state of Connecticut become a partner with this community, with all these folks here, with labor movement, with the unions, with the environmentalists, to go ahead and do something very, very special here. The last thing I want to say, and one of the issues with quality of life, it's interesting, one of your consultants, the state's consultants, Mercer Human Resources Group, just came out with a study in March of this year. And they listed about 256 communities across cities, major cities across the world, in terms of quality of life. Zurich came in number one. Baghdad dropped down from 215 to 216, okay? This is a study that was, so when we talk about measuring quality of life issues, I would suggest that it's too subjective of an area for this particular panel to go ahead and weigh in. I would ask that there are more public participation in that particular issue. But a key element of quality of life has to do, and I think this is well-known in trade unions and union movement in general, has to do with living wages. And I have to tell you, I read an article today about Lowe's importing non-union, low-paying jobs in the Plainfield facility. That is obscene! I think one of the developers, I believe, has made a commitment to the trade unions in this area to go ahead and utilize union jobs, to go ahead and pursue their particular development. And I would just like to speak absolutely in support of that notion.
Cameron Champlin, followed by Margaret Conable.
Mr. Ryan, members of the panel, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Cameron Champlin. I've been a 62-year resident of southeastern Connecticut. I want to just, for the sake of brevity, I want to concur with the previous speakers, and I'd just like to add a few things. We've talked about quality of life, and as the previous speaker said, there's a lot of different factions to quality of life. First and foremost, I believe, is good-paying jobs with good benefits. Anybody that has that can be a productive part of society. I don't care whether you own a restaurant, automotive dealership, or anywhere in between, when somebody doesn't make enough wages so they have some expendable income, they can't participate. They can't go out and buy a new car or even a decent used car. They can't go to the restaurant once a month or twice a month with their wife, take their families, and help the economy of the community. Number two, we're talking about traffic, and we understand there is a lot of traffic here. But you know what? Right now, there's a lot of traffic that passes through the town of Preston. And what do they get out of it? Zero. This, this project, if it goes through, will create some more traffic, and I believe the state of Connecticut should step to the plate and do what they have to do to help that traffic situation. And in the meantime, the state of Connecticut is going to get a lot of tax money back, not only from the property that is going to be owned there, but from the wages people are going to make there and pay state income tax. One other thing I'd like to say, and I hope this never happens, but we all know, it was only a few short years ago that the submarine base was slated to be closed. Now, if that happens, and I hope to God it never does, but I think we should hope for the best and plan for the worst. I read, and I'm not taking these figures out of thin air, about two months ago, there was an article in the day paper that said, if the submarine base is closed, and in turn, that could impact Electric Boat, because Electric Boat gets a lot of its work from the submarines because of their close proximity. If both of those things happen, it would be a $2.5 billion a year impact on the economy in southeastern Connecticut. If that happens, somebody else had spoke earlier about this, a few short years ago, and I believe it was Senator Cook that said, a few short years ago, EB was laying off. People that had been there for 20 or 25 years were losing their jobs. As I said earlier, I've been here for 62 years. No one would ever think that you would lose your job at EB. That was one of the strongholds of labor in southeastern Connecticut. That helped the economy here. Thank God, and I don't care whether you're for gambling or against gambling, thank God at that time Foxwoods came in and helped some of these people that were losing their jobs over there to be able to keep their homes and not have to possibly sell their home and move away to find employment. I have, my children are all grown, they have jobs. I have grandchildren coming up. I would love to have my grandchildren be able to get employment in this area, which this project would do, so that they can stay in this area. I don't want them to have to move to Timbuktu, so if I want to visit my grandchildren, I got to plan a vacation to go see them. I think everyone in this room should realize that this project would certainly help the economy and help the future of this area.
Margaret Conable, followed by Robert Beauregard.
Margaret Conable, Carpenter's Local 24. Secretary Ryan, distinguished panel, and friends and neighbors and brothers and sisters, when this property is developed, there will be some kind of jobs that will be created. I know that a couple of people had mentioned Lowe's, and I want to dwell on that a little longer, because the Lowe's Distribution Center up the road is an example of what kind of development that could be. Lowe's, writing in the Norwich Bulletin, wants to be... Lowe's, writing in the Norwich Bulletin, wants to be congratulated, because after the state police came in to help the Department of Labor enforce the law, their subcontractors on that project came up to the state required minimum wage. That project was supported by $20 million in tax breaks from the state of Connecticut. Does anyone in this room want to see that disaster multiplied by 10? Please consider who's doing the developing and what commitments they have made to the community.
Robert Beauregard, followed by John Briggs.
Good evening, Secretary Ryan, distinguished committee volunteers, and a special empathy tonight to the Planning and Zoning Commissions and the respective communities of the town of Preston and Norwich. My name is Robert Beauregard, I'm a 38-year member of Carpenter's Local, number 24. I'd like to start my comments this evening to talk a little bit about economic development. I'm from northeastern Connecticut, and we know an awful lot about unemployment out in northeastern Connecticut. And I'm down here this evening to support my friends in southeastern Connecticut, because they've provided me with a lot of job opportunities over my 37 years as a member of the Carpenter's Local. And I'm a little bit surprised by the DECD and the OPM when they talk about concerns for the environment and concerns for, for good-paying jobs when they create Department of Economic Development subsidies to create jobs that are supposed to target depressed areas and provide them with an opportunity to uplift their standard of living for their children and for their families, and, and it's not happening. And I want to give you a couple examples. Approximately 10 years ago, let's talk about the environment, what the state Siting Council tried to do to us up in northeastern Connecticut. They had a great idea, they were going to put a demolition wood-burning power plant in the town of Killenly, a quarter of a mile from one of our largest natural resources, Alexander's Lake, and they were going to use a lot of DECD funding to help support that project. At the same time, the DECD and the State Siting Council also had another great idea for northeastern Connecticut. They gave us the Tire Burner up in Sterling. And, you know, they keep coming up with great ideas, and they don't really create any job opportunities that elevate the standard of living for northeastern Connecticut. And the same proposal that's being considered by this committee tonight has a very, very good potential to be the largest job opportunities ever presented to southeastern Connecticut if, if the project ever comes to be approved. And I know we're not supposed to talk about the project, but we all know which project is the best project when we're looking at jobs. Let's not kid ourselves. We have what we call in northeastern Connecticut, a brain drain. We spend millions and millions of dollars, the taxpayers' money, every year to educate our children, and when they go on to higher education, guess where they go? They move out of state, because we don't take Department of Economic Development funding and create serious job opportunities. We were willing to give the richest retail corporation in the world up in northeastern Connecticut last year $60 million. The corporation, everybody in this room knows, Walmart, the richest corporation in, in the world, they had $280 billion in sales last year and $40 billion in profits, but the DECD thought it was a great idea to give Walmart $60 million to build a warehousing distribution center on a tract of land that, guess what, wasn't even appropriately zoned for industrial development. It was the town's only business park zoning district. Well, guess what? The people in Killenly were too smart for that, we didn't buy it, and we told the DECD to take Walmart and their special backroom deals and head on out of town. And, and we're talking about bringing in 1,000 tractor-trailers a day into the town of Killenly with that distribution center within a quarter of a mile of our elementary schools, right through a residential neighborhood. And at the same time, the DECD was cooking that project up, they were also having a backroom deal to give the 14th largest retailer in the world, Lowe's, another $20 million to bring another 1,000 trucks a day into the town of Plainfield. I real feel bad for the town of Plainfield, because their economic development individual at that time, I'm sure you all know who he is, he just got indicted and was found guilty for trying to bury hazardous waste in his community at the Pavel Industrial Project. So, I, I just want to say one thing. Give the people in Preston and Norwich an opportunity to create real jobs, not just for southeastern Connecticut, but for the benefit, benefit of the entire state. That's why I'm here today. The entire state is behind this proposal. We need good job opportunities, and there's a proposal that you're going to have an opportunity to consider that is going to benefit everybody in the entire state.
John Briggs Senior, followed by Steve Matthews.
Ladies and gentlemen of the committee, neighbors, friends, people, close people who are here from far away, I'm here because my neighbors, the Yules, our union members, they're staying at my home, they're at the union hall all the time looking for jobs, they're ready to work, and they told me about this meeting today, and I hope they get work. I don't, now that I'm an adult, trust the people in government. Not all the people, but a lot of them. I'm sorry, I'll direct to you, ladies and gentlemen. I called DCF as a mandated caller on a seven-year-old who was being threatened to be killed. She was being kicked, she was being hit. I received no support from people in Connecticut. I sent information to Governor Rowland's office. Carolyn Nino, his staff assistant, got back to me. We've dealt with Arthur Spader, the Commissioner's Office of Department of Public Safety, Department, the Division of the State Police. Oh, they turned it over to the Eastern District Headquarters, Major Stephen Fields. He's had it. Oh, but they're not going to give me the call on it until something else is taken care of. My point, I can quote Connecticut statutes that have not been respected. For me, for my family, I've suffered retribution from the people I called about, but I would do it again for the little girl. As far as traffic, I think it's just fine, there's more traffic. Why? Because the two large institutions, the Mohegan Sun and the Foxwoods Casinos, have already brought a great deal of automobiles in, and the construction process on the connection to the Mohegan Pequot Bridge was done in record time, and a wonderful job, and it leads right to this property. I do know that human beings have positions, so I also know that people who are interested in flow past their homes can send letters via fax machines, email, telephone calls once a week, once a month, but past your word, past your opinions, and I thank you for this forum for opinions being given. I've seen my neighbors, from my 10 years down the road on Cedar Crest Drive, giving their opinions, and I've seen other people, faces I know, and it's really nice, as an adult, to see our government at work for the better, for the, for the best it has to offer, and this is part of it. I don't know anything about what the committees do, but I do know I was a planner at Electric Boat. I was a union electrician for six years, then I went into management, I was there for 17 years, and I believe of the roughly 27,000 people, more than 10,000, at one chunk, chunk it was 10,000, but it got down to 6,000. Doing the math, that's quite a bit even more than the 10,000. I did not want to go to work at the casinos. I was fortunate, my wife had trained me to be a coach, she owned Flip City Gymnastics, and I learned to be a coach. I love it, we do it together. It does not give us anything more than maybe making our bills, but we love the children. I would love another job to make what I did at EB, but I didn't want to go to the casinos. 65% of the couples are breaking up that work there, and we saw it with parents of children that came to our facility, and just a few nights ago, I learned of that percentage. Well, I would love to work at a facility that I've heard about, that you are making decisions for down at the state property. I've driven by it, ran out of gas twice when I worked at EB there, because I was a family man with children. I've been around, I've had a lot of jobs, I'm willing to work hard, and all of these people are too. I think it's awesome to bring in business, especially business that has the money to back them up, solid plans, and we can move forward for the future. People coming into this facility can accent the other businesses that are huge, as it's been mentioned, and like the Rat Pack in Las Vegas can be totally interactive. Thank you for your time, thank you for all your help.
Steve Matthews, followed by Michael Keed.
Secretary Ryan, members of the committee, citizens, members of the trade union movement. My name is Steve Matthews, and I'm the Connecticut Director of Local 217 of the Hotel and Restaurant We represent, in HRE, almost 5,000 members in Connecticut and Rhode Island, right across the state line, some of those folks may be working here as well, once we, once we have a facility open. But I want to make a point about jobs. I want to echo my friends Ed Riley and Chuck Appleby about good-quality jobs. There are cer, there are two kinds of jobs in this region, basically. There are jobs that have pensions, health insurance, living wages, people can raise their families. And then there are jobs which are minimum wage, or I've just learned at Lowe's, some below minimum wage jobs, where people don't have a pension, don't have health insurance, and they can't raise their families. Well, in the manufacturing sector, those jobs became living-wage jobs, because the workers had the courage to stand together and to organize into unions. And they did that here in eastern Connecticut, but unfortunately, given globalization, given the decline in the defense industry, those jobs, many of them, have gone away. Similarly, in the building trades, right? The carpenters that you see here, the laborers that you see here, they didn't just get their living wage because they're good guys, or they have cool jackets, although they do have very cool jackets, right? They didn't get that. They got that because they stood together with their brothers and sisters, and they organized, and they stuck together, and they said, "We have to have living wages for our families." And they didn't do it one by one, they did it together. Well, in the service sector, we're about 50 years behind y'all, even though, and our jackets aren't as cool either, right? But we, in the service sector, will have jobs if we have the right kind of development, there will also be living-wage jobs. Where workers have unions, they have pensions, they make a living wage, they have health insurance. In the service sector, where folks don't have unions, by and large, they don't have any of those things, and sometimes they have to go on welfare, even though they're working full-time. And that ought not to be the case. It certainly ought not to be the case here in eastern Connecticut. So I'm here to say that there's one development proposal that could create excellent service sector, the opportunity for, excellent service sector, living-wage jobs, because the workers will be organized together, and by the way, they'll stick together with the rest of the building trades and the manufacturing unions, and create a better quality of life for everyone that lives in eastern Connecticut. So I ask that everyone on the panel, please listen to what everyone has said. This seems like a no-brainer to us. So my last point, then, comes to a question about the process. There have been a lot of questions raised about the process. There have been a lot of issues raised about questions of trust and why things are being done this way or another way. Well, in one minute, in less than one minute, I can ask an additional question about the process, because we want it to be a fair process, we want it to be a trustworthy process. So, the question is, under what authority does the Secretary of OPM put out an RFP for the sale of land? Under what statutory authority does that occur? Because this has to be done the right way, the fair way, so that everyone in this room and everyone who's a citizen of this state can have confidence that their government is fairly representing them. And that's very, very important to us, it's very, very important to everyone in the entire state, and perhaps the country. A lot of eyes are on this process, and we need to know how it's being done and why, why it's being done, and under what authority it's being done.
Michael Keed, followed by Mark Millat.
It's Michael Keech, K-E-C-H. Mr. Ryan, guests, union members. I've lived in this area all my life, been educated, brought up here, went to school, went to college, now I'm into building trades and I love it. I love what I do. I'm a Mason Local 1, Connecticut. I was in the laborers' union for 10 years, and union's the way to go. I'm proud. I worked on this school, which was almost 100% union, which came in under budget, Mr. Condon, didn't it? So anyone that says anything about unions, okay, and they don't bring in anything under budget, we got the manpower, we bring projects in on time. Now I'd like to say something about the quality of life issue, okay? I have a young family, everyone here has families, you have families, all right? Let's invest in, in southeast Connecticut, okay? We're investing in Hartford, Adrian's Landing Hotel Convention Center, you know, we're building up Hartford, which is great. Let's do something here for Preston and Norwich, because they've gotten a raw deal for a long time. Bottom line is money. We need jobs, we need jobs for long-term construction and the jobs that will be sustained if we have Utopia, okay? Let's do the right thing, vote your conscience, okay? Because I, I like being part of something that's big, okay? I've been on a lot of state projects, Eastern, Yukon, go right through the state. And we have, this is something that can be great, okay? I was part of Foxwoods, like a lot of people were here, part of Mohegan's, okay? This is bigger than us, it's for the whole state of Connecticut. We need jobs, if we don't have jobs, we can't spend any money. Where's, you know, what's going to happen to tourism? What's going to happen to buying vehicles and homes and stuff, okay? We're Connecticut taxpayers, we pay, we pay taxes in the state of Connecticut, we buy homes, we buy cars, we buy consumer goods. Let's, let's get Utopia in here, okay? And let's get some jobs. Thank you very much.